Jim Neal, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, for us. Do you have the paperwork?
For the...
Gary does. Okay, Gary's not here.
Gary was just in the back room.
Yeah, also, pardon?
Yeah, we need to finish that so we can close out the Drainage Board meeting.
I think he's being benched. Well, we can always take a recess during Commissioners'. Do you want to do that?
He's got his stuff in his hands ready. I don't know why he didn't follow my hand. Try to see if you can find Gary Duncan. He's manning it in the know.
I bet they're really happy with it, thanks. I know, that's if we should have a holiday song while we wait. Everybody knows the dreidel song.
There he is, Mike.
Found him.
Garrett.
You're on the podium.
You're presenting.
There he goes. We just handled that.
Go ahead and proceed, Mr. Duncan.
Good afternoon. At the Drainage Board meeting this morning, three bids were open for reconstruction of a portion of the Murray-Clark and SJ Compton drain, various intersections that include culvert replacements and intersection improvements. The three bids that were received, Duncan Robertson submitted a bid of $3,690,591.10, H.I.S. contractors submitted a bid of $3,990,000. Hoosier Pride submitted a bid of $3,091,434.60. We have reviewed the bids and found that Hoosier Pride was the apparent low bidder, and we found no math errors with their bid, so they are the low bidder. Their bid was complete, and we recommend that the Commissioners award the contract to Hoosier Pride.
So move.
Second.
Just been a motion and a second discussion.
For one favor discussion, the other thing that we discussed this morning was the fact that a part of this project is being funded through drainage assessments, so we do need to have a hearing for that. And that hearing early, so we could have it would be sometime in February. So we would request that, if possible, to award most of the contract. I believe the amount of the ditch work was close to $227,000. So if we could award the contract for the $3,091,434.60 less the amount of the ditch work pending that being approved at here.
If the cost of the ditch work is funded today without a hearing?
It is not.
Yeah, so we can't accept that portion of the contract anyway.
Okay, so you can sort of accept the other forms.
So it's a recommendation of highway that we accept?
The three small structures and the intersection improvement portion of that. We have all the funds.
So that is funded.
That is funded.
So let's reconsider the prior motion to award the three, the structures and what else? I'm sorry.
Intersection.
And the intersection improvement portion of it. So there's like five parts to this. There's five parts, and we would award four of the five.
Okay. So I'd so move as described by the county engineer, highway engineer.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we can...
You move to adjourn the Drainage Board meeting?
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we can proceed with the Commissioner.
All right. At this time, we will call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for our meeting of Monday, December 11, 2023. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum of all three Commissioners. Ms. Mills, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We did have executive session, and is there a motion to approve the memorandum thereof?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have two sets of minutes with, for consideration, 11/26, excuse me, 11/27/23 and 11/27/23 joint session with County Council.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Highway business. Oh, sorry. Jumped right past the bid openings, and I imagine there's a few folks in there that would like to know what the answers are. So at this time, we will open bids for small structure number 123023, 196th Street, Unknown Stream, Wayne Township.
First bid package is from United Construction Services. They include the Form 96 with the non collusion affidavit. They acknowledge the addenda. And their itemized bid is $549,000. The next bid packet is from Alco Inc. of Batesville, Indiana. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are included. They acknowledge receipt of the addenda. They have certain, their financial information is included. Their bid amount, $469,305.64. Next bid packet is from Midwest Paving. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are included. Bid bond, sealed financial statements are all included. Their bid is $425,533.63. The next bid packet is from Hoosier Pride Excavating. Their Form 96, bid bond, non collusion affidavit, financial statements are all included. They acknowledge receipt of the addendum. Their bid is $420,382.98. The next bid packet is from Morphy Construction. Their financial statements. Form 96, non collusion affidavit and bid bond are all included. Their base bid is $483,000. That appears to be all the bids on this particular project, and these persons know any of the bids that should have been read. Not appearing, recommend they be referred to the Highway Department for review and recommendation later in this meeting.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have two sets of minutes with, for consideration, 11/26, excuse me, 11/27/23 and 11/27/23 joint session with County Council.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Highway business. Oh, sorry. Jumped right past the bid openings, and I imagine there's a few folks in there that would like to know what the answers are. So at this time, we will open bids for small structure number 123023, 196th Street, Unknown Stream, Wayne Township.
First bid package is from United Construction Services. They include the Form 96 with the non collusion affidavit. They acknowledge the addenda. The next bid packet is from Alco Inc. of Batesville, Indiana. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are included. They acknowledge receipt of the addenda. They have certain, their financial information is included. Their bid amount, $469,305.64. The next bid packet is from Midwest Paving. Their Form 96 and non collusion affidavit, bid bond, sealed financial statements are all included. The next bid packet is from Hoosier Pride Excavating. Their Form 96, bid bond, non collusion affidavit, financial statements are all included. They acknowledge receipt of the addendum. Their bid is $420,382.98. The next bid packet is from Morphy Construction. Form 96, non collusion affidavit and bid bond are all included. Their base bid is $483,000. That appears to be all the bids on this particular project, and these persons know any of the bids that should have been read. Not appearing, recommend they be referred to the Highway Department for review and recommendation later in this meeting.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The next bid packet concerns resurface in Jackson, primarily Jackson Township. First bidder is Reeve Riley. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are included, as is their bid bond. Their base bid, $1,395,000. The next bid packet is from Milestone. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit, bid bond, and financial statements are all included. Their bid, $1,559,860. The next bid packet is from Midwest Paving. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit, bid bond, financial statements are all included. Their bid is $1,393,158.4. Next bid packet is for M&amp;B Paving. Their Form 96, bid bond, non collusion affidavit are all included. Their base bid, $1,534,000, yeah, that's right, $1,534,769.69. The next bid packet is from DC Construction Services. Their Form 96, non collusion affidavit are all included. Their bid is $1,385,531.49. The next packet is from Calumet. Their bid bond, Form 96. Financial statements are all included. I did not say bid bond, I want that out now. And their bid, $1,469,000. That appears to be all the bids for the resurgence project. Any persons present who know of any other bids that should have been read at this time. Not appearing, recommend they be referred to the Highway Department for review and recommendation later today.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thanks to all the bidders that took the time. I know it's our duty to come up with these bids, and we appreciate it. Now, highway business.
The moment I've been waiting for.
I know, it's so exciting.
Did you make that bid estimate on that last night? Did you make this bid estimate?
No, that's Mark Fisher.
Of course it is, Mark.
Here comes the bus, Mark.
He's within the tolerance level.
Hundred thousand.
I have no roadcap permits, no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits, no bonds for acceptance or release, which means you two agreements under supplements. The first item I have for you is an agreement, supplemental agreement between Hamilton County and USI. This is to add four small structures to our timber bridge testing that we previously had. This is an increase of $4,000, bringing the new not to exceed the $83,500. Recommend the Board approve.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item I have for you is supplemental agreement between Hamilton County and Beam Loans and Meth. This is for the design work on Oleo Road Pavement Preservation Project. Because of trying to get this coordinated with the roundabout project that's going on out there, this is an increase in the amount of $5,700, bringing the new not to exceed amount to $163,800. Recommend the Board approve.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next agreement is between Hamilton County and Resolution Group. This is for the design of intersection conflict warning systems at three locations, 191st Street and Victory Chapel Road, 236th Street and Six Points Road, and Southeastern Parkway and Connecticut Avenue. This is a not to exceed amount of $58,800. Recommend the Board approve.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I have no streets for acceptance today, which means I'm doing concurrents with traffic study correspondence. I have a list dated today's date, December 11th. Give me a second. Containing nine responses. Recommend the Board approve.
So move.
Second, discussion. Any concerns out there, any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is public works curation results. I have a list, again dated December 11, 2023. We had two different items go out, and we had a guardrail end treatment replacement for Grassy Branch Road approximately 850 feet south of 191st Street. We solicited for quotes and received four quotes with the low coming in at James H. Stewart, $4,025. We also had bridge guardrail repairs for Bridge 54, 276th Street over Little Cicero Creek, just east of Webster Pit Road. We again solicited four quotes and received three. Again, the low on this one was James H. Stewart, with the amount of $4,025. Recommend the Board accept the results of these quotes.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I have two official actions for you today. The first is for 191st Street from Prominence Road to Durbin Road. This is memorializing what you decided at the Highway meeting to lower the speed limit here to 45 miles an hour to match the remainder, which was already lowered.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The next official action is based off of the correspondence you approved.
Excuse me, they already put the signs up last week.
Yes, yes. This is just making it all official in writing. The next item is 206th and Six Points Road, all ways stopped. This is a result of the investigation we did for the correspondence. Recommend the Board enact this full way stop.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I have no miscellaneous correspondence or other announcements for you, and that's right as everything we're done.
Nothing to do? Okay. Next item is for Ms. Bieber, reporter. Good afternoon.
Well, I sent you two contracts for redaction service, which is redacting social security numbers, recomplanting information off of my documents, run us for six months for the remainder of the year, and then for the following year next year.
And these, the pricing's in line with prior years?
Well, we had, Connor and I have worked somewhat together on that because they were going to increase the prices, and that's why we are, why we have two contracts today because we, the contract was up in July, and they wanted us to go on a four-year contract and give us a flat fee and not base it on a page count. So Connor and I met with the president of CSI and renegotiated. So we're going to pay a flat amount based on what I feel like my average has been, but he's going to bill me annually for actually the pages that we do. And if I go over that, because I guess they buy pages in a bulk rate, and since I am wanting to go way lower than what they had asked me to, we came to agreement that I would pay two cents more if we went over that amount per page, which I foresee happening, but...
So you feel comfortable with the proposed agreement?
Yes, so we're going to, but we're going to look at it annually, so I can increase my price, my page count annually if I want to.
So move.
Second. And I assume you're looking at making sure that there's other services just in case you're not able to go to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Safety risk management. Mr. Rushford?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So today, I'm here with three items, and I'm just going down the list of the agenda here, the first of which is an internal claim that was administered by the Safety and Risk Office for a damaged vehicle that was damaged on November 6th. The smart, the spark notes version is a county employee operating a county vehicle struck a concrete signpost causing front end damage. That vehicle was taken to Miller's repaired. The repair amount was $2,747.13, and today I'm seeking your approval to issue payment.
So move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The second item is requesting to repair for a damaged vehicle. Vehicle was damaged on November 16th, 2023. The vehicle's assigned to the Sheriff's Office. It was a 2024 police intercept. The vehicle, county employee operating the county vehicle, a deer entered the roadway. They were unable to avoid the collision. Ultimately, the deer was struck, causing front end damage. The amount to repair is $8,882.02. There's no concern of that vehicle being a total loss, so I am requesting permission to have that vehicle repaired and a payment issued once.
A deer did $8,800?
Was the deputy okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, shoot, because they're pretty dangerous.
So move.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now they can flip them up into the windshield.
The third and final item was for a damaged 2021 Chevy Tahoe. Incident occurred on December 4th where a county employee mistakenly struck a mailbox as they were attempting to merge onto US 31. Multiple damage was observed to the passenger side of the vehicle. Repair estimate is $7,950.22, and there's no concern of that vehicle being a total loss, so today I'm requesting permission to repair that and issue payment once.
So move.
Second, but I have to ask, what kind of mailbox was this? Was it a concrete structure?
It had to have been a concrete base.
The damage was phenomenal.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the worst I've seen for any mailbox. Flip this side, flip this side.
Oh, it was horrible. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just back to highway, because we had something that actually could have been catastrophic where a truck hit one of the mailboxes on 146th Street, and the whole front axle flew off, but it was actually a concrete post. I really think we ought to, because to me, that's an obstruction in right of way, because it was clearly a right of way, and I think they're dangerous when you have that kind of structure. So should we consider requiring or specifying what kind of materials can be used? And literally, the truck driver could have lost his life as bad as that was. have lost his life as bad as that was, at least on our right-of-way. I assume we can regulate what we allow in the right-of-way.
When they get a permit, we can tell them what they have to have.
Okay.
Those that are existing, though, are a different story.
Well, that one...
Unless you want to call them an obstruction.
Well, I think that's something we need to think about, because this is just indicative of, I think, a problem. And luckily, the guiding get killed when we hit it on 146th Street with the speeds we have.
It's kind of a two-way street, though, too, Christine, because, you know, if they don't have a real stable set for their mailbox, the snow can knock it over as they go by and things like that, too, so...
But we've got swing-away options for that.
That, you know, if we, if we put something in the right-of-way, it has to be breakaway. I mean, within that clear zone, it has to be breakaway.
From liability purposes, but a snowplow could knock it down.
The snowplow could.
That's like, and we've got the one replacement policy that they can replace it with a swing-away.
Or they can take money and replace it themselves.
Right. But I just think, Connor, why don't you think about that for a bit? Because we're, if we're not regulating right-of-way, I think we potentially face some concerns. And this is just another example of crazy stuff in the right-of-way. Okay, well, we digress, but I think...
Well, at the same time, maybe we ought to just review that whole mailbox policy.
Yeah, okay.
A while since we did that.
And think about the apparent right-of-way issues. The Lawrence County case that says absent express dedication, right-of-way is to the edge of pavement.
And that's fine, but on the high-speed 146th Street, that's clearly our right-of-way.
Yeah. And maybe we want to limit it to the big roads.
Well, that's all we'd have jurisdiction of. Okay, well, we'll move on. And it looks like we have a health department thing.
Yes, I was trying to follow the schedule and be ready for you and ready to go.
Good job.
Good afternoon. Bringing to, in front of you today, another project that we're working on with our fire and EMS partners in the county today, bringing a request for your acceptance and approval to, to purchase some testing equipment to be used out in the county as, so with our fire and EMS partners. We, they brought this quote, well, we worked on the quote. They brought up the project to us. And one of the things that we're seeking to do with this is to increase our resources and our preparedness capabilities out there in the county. Just for a little more information on it, the total that we would like to do, the purchase price is around $10,000, but the total cost with some maintenance is going to be $16,602. And we will be using grant funds that are preparedness grant funds from the state to make this purchase.
Sounds like a good idea. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Jason, how are you coming with your virus vaccinations?
Coming along pretty good. Still seeing some pretty decent numbers as far as vaccinations. Supply is, I will, it's a little, not almost say limited, but it's kind of a smaller supplies and what we can order.
Are our employees getting it out there?
Yes, they seem to be getting it out there. And we've done pretty good on flu. I can get some more numbers better from Janice on that, but seems to be uptake on that pretty well.
Because I got mine up at our clinic, because you guys were a little restrictive on when...
A lot of it is the insurance that we have to run now, because it really truly is all insurance. So it's a little different right now and kind of pre-approving. I actually got mine at CVS early on, just because of the speed and the vaccines. It was more on that commercial market than it was, even at that local health department.
Jason, you're the director. I think you should have been able to get it at the...
I think I should have been able to, too, but I also didn't want to take a vaccine away from somebody else that needed it faster and better than I did.
She thinks he's kinder than you.
Yes. So you got my lineup.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, and I see Michelle here, community development block grant for Plum Prairie Historic Rehab.
Yes. So today before you, I have a funding agreement between the county and Hand Incorporated for their Plum Prairie project. It is a historic rehab. They were able to acquire three single-family structures and will turn, renovate those to turn those into actually four units. The total funding amount for the CDVG funds is $304,760.
Move approval.
Second. Have they gotten bids on these?
The rehab's underway.
Even better.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Safety Communications. I saw Mr. Hubbs walk in. It's your lucky day, but you were lucky you're people.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Before you, the is the credit card application. That's, this is in a follow-up to the already approved order you allowed us to create our own credit card through the lit funding. This application will be, if you grant it, will be through Chase Bank. We worked in conjunction with the treasurer, the county treasurer, to set this up and Mr. Buckingham. So we're excited about this opportunity. And I will note, Chase has a platform in place that is a direct link with Workday. So it's our full expectation to use that Workday model provided by ISS to just continue to enhance the accountability of this.
Tell me again what, what was wrong with the old system?
The old system, the credit cards are used by all county departments. And we, one communications, I think we were one of the largest users of it, and they would get maxed out. So it would cause the other departments might need to use the credit card, and the funds aren't available.
Just the one from BMO would have maxed out. The other one wouldn't have maxed out, would it?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
The other one would not have maxed out. One of them was BMO, but they put a limit on us of, I think, $50,000.
Yes.
And then I went and we had another one set up with merchants, I think.
First merchants. But every time I used it, they deny it, so...
BMO, not first merchants.
First merchants. Yeah.
Because of that last convention, I use first merchants. That BMO, they turned down.
Well, my point, I think going with Chase, I'd like to see what Chase does to see if we're more successful with Chase, because...
What kind of limit did they give you? Or do you know?
When you passed the previous, it's $50,000. That's what we were limited to.
That'll be for them alone. So previously, sometimes other departments had utilized it, and then therefore they, there wasn't enough capacity for them to utilize it. And other times, they've used it to the point where...
Somebody else would get rid of it.
Somebody else couldn't do it.
Are we running this problem all over?
Well, as Mike indicated, they're one of the larger users, so it's not something issue that we have.
So moving him away from the other two should solve the other two problem?
We think it potentially will. There's some capability for expansion if we see it. And once we see how this works, if we feel it's appropriate.
Yeah, I really want another vendor in there to see.
Okay, I make most super.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, while you're there, just a heads up for our next meeting is, we are at the point, you want to explain the radio?
Yes. So we worked with the 911 Board this morning and presented, we have motor roll as preparing, finalizing their proposal for the county to renew our radios for public safety first responders. That's a significant contract, approximately $19 million. But anyway, that'd be before you, before the end of the year for approval, requesting approval, so we can keep those radios going. In a nutshell, these radios, once we order them, it's about six months before we get them in hand. So we have to stay ahead of the game and replenish them. So the last time we did this was in 2014. The shelf life of these radios is 10 years. So it's come in upon for us to look at that and get those going.
Okay, thank you.
So what we'll do is do a lease agreement that we can buy out if we issue a bond and include the cost of those radios in the bond as part of the center. Okay? So that's how it's structured. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Commissioner Committee Report.
I don't have anything.
Well, been working on dispatches. As normal, and the 911 meeting went well today. Mr. Hubbs and staff went through our recommendation as to the new 911 center. There weren't a whole lot of questions on it. I think it was well-received. And we went through the radio program, the fact that, you know, we're looking to do major investments over there. And we put it upon the mayors for them to determine how, with our budget on the radios, how they want it distributed. So the mayors and the sheriff were tasked to get together and figure out county-wide standards, so we're not in the middle of it all the time in dispatches, so.
That's good. Well, one thing, though, I did want to mention, too, is the negotiations between River View Hospital and Anthem that we talked about. And Katie Stowers, with first person, talked with Anthem again. And the last report I had from Dave was they were within 0.02% of an agreement, and he said that things are going very well at this point.
That's good news. Very good news. And I would, I'd also note the bicentennial bash. I think we all three attended that over at IB Tech, and it was very nicely put together.
It was.
Very nicely put together. Okay. Attorney.
Yes, I have quite a few things, so I apologize ahead of time. The first two items I have are a warranty deed and a temporary easement grant. This is for the Wings Building, HHW and the Annex Building for 4H. You have previously agreed to the dollar amount for the acquisition of property from the city of Novoso. In those, the deed and the temporary easement, though, there was language that said that the commissioners needed a resolution from the county council by statute. That is not how it works. You are the executive and legislative branch of the county. And so we took that language out, and I just have for you today to sign these two. You've already approved the, the dollar amounts of the transfer and the vacation dates. These are just the updated warranties with the appropriate language that you guys need.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Either we have a fleet of aircraft going over, or someone's rolling stuff on the...
It's Steve Rushworth rolling on his chair up there. That's what it is.
No, he's down here.
He's my go-to scapegoat, so you never know. The second item I have is a CDVG agreement between Hilton County and Hand. Michelle is here. This project was, it's for the project near 108th Streets for $350,000. This project was approved by you at your September 11th meeting. The document itself was just not signed, so she asked if I could get to you guys to have you sign the actual document today for the, is that correct?
We already acted, right.
Yep. So you've already acted just to have you sign it.
Okay, why are we signing more than one deed? Are there three parcels?
Yes.
Okay, it's just one deed per parcel?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thanks.
The next item I have is a change order for the HHW temporary offices. This is the amount of $29,000. Twenty-nine, sorry, is it the exact dollar? $29,000, $29,000.446. This is a change order to the scoping agreement that we have with Envoy for the HHW BOT agreement. There's not been an actual BOT agreement at this point in time, still going through scoping. This has been reviewed and vetted by Steve Wood, and Steve Wood is here also if you have any questions, comments, or concerns about this.
So this is actually a standalone agreement, because we don't have any bot to amend?
Yes, yes. This is in addition to the current scoping agreement that you have with Envoy.
So move.
This is being paid out by the same bond and everything, too, so there's funds available for it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just these, Commissioner Altman, Commissioner.
The next item I have is a contract for Economic Development Services between Hamilton County and HWC Engineering. Chris Hamm is here on behalf of HWC. The contract is going to be broken into two tasks. Task one is for an area strategic plan that will provide economic development and planning services for the US 31 corridor area at an amount of, what is it, $47,500. The second task two is on-call Economic Development Services at a not to exceed hourly rate, not exceed $5,000 per month. And Chris, do you want to kind of come and discuss some of those, or brief the commissioners on some of the services and what that all entails?
Thank you, Connor. Good afternoon, commissioners. As Connor outlined, there are two portions to the agreement. The first is a strategic plan analysis for the area along the 31 corridor, specifically at the 236 and 276 Street interchanges, economic development areas that are currently within the county TIF areas. There are several documents that exist that speak to development of those areas, the county's comp plan, the overlay district that exists there. What they lack is a real focus on what it is, the intent of development is in those areas. And I know that there have been multiple developmental entities that have approached the county about developing in that area. Strategic plan will help make cohesive strategic decisions about which of those projects are appropriate, which of them might not, under what standards those projects may be appropriate along the corridor. The second piece is an on-call upgrade agreement, an hourly not to exceed on a monthly basis, to help review development applications as they come in, help negotiate those agreements on behalf of the county with private developers as they're moving in. We may never get to $5,000 a month of those processes. I hope it's busy enough that we certainly do, but those hours will only be extended in the case that there's actual items that are sent for review and conversations, meetings that need to be attended as part of these processes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about either one of those elements.
So what is your ETA on the master plan?
We anticipate having that completed in four months.
In four months? Okay. And who's, who is your point of contact for direction on the hourly?
It'll be the president of board commissioners and maybe someone from the redevelopment commission and myself. So it'd be, there'd be three, and three different people that would be constantly communicating with Chris and his team, since there will be redevelopment items with Tiffing and everything like that involved, too. We want to make sure it's your president, redevelopment president, and then myself, make sure we're taking care of that.
Okay. And the funding is coming through what source?
It could, it could come from a few, I guess. You have funds available in your professional services for this year, and then there's also ARPA dollars that you could use for this, the Baker's Corner project, too.
Okay, so we have...
Or out of Tiff eventually.
I just want to make sure before we sign off, we have those identified for the audit to Hilton County. Okay. Do you have any questions, Steve? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next document I have is a grant and project agreement. This is between Hamilton County and the Hamilton County Community Development Corporation in the amount of $2.4 million. This is for the Hamilton County Community Development Corporation to purchase land in conjunction with the Hamilton County's affordable housing project. I'd ask for your approval and vote today.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. So you're online to have the financial institutions set up to accept the transfer?
Yes, we are meeting with the accountants to help set everything up, write it into the bank account, make sure that the tax ID number, everything matches and everything like that. And we, I believe it could all be set up within a week or so from today.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Next, I'm sorry, I told you I had a lot of different things. The next item is an agreement between the town of Sheridan and Hamilton County. The town of Sheridan has a monon trail project, and there are a few parcels that are outside of their jurisdiction and in Hamilton County's jurisdiction. They need your authority to condemn those properties to move forward with their, with this project. This would be, this is a town of Sheridan project. They're funding entirely. Only action we have is just providing them the authority to condemn property outside of their jurisdiction that's in our jurisdiction. So after saying you will have no more involvement with it.
No approval.
Second. And who are they seeking guidance from on their process?
Julie Lee and Beth Copeland, and I believe are the two attorneys of record.
I just want to make sure we're ceding authority.
Not us, it's, yeah, we're ceded to them, they're handling it. I don't think we've used Beth or Jewel for a condemnation, but I believe they're both competent attorneys to help them navigate that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Second, all in favor? Aye. I just want to point out with respect to Baker's Corner, given Taft's involvement with the town of Sheridan, I view that as a conflict that's not waivable. And any advice, we just cannot use that firm.
Absolutely, and we are diligent about identifying conflicts when they arise. We do not sign off on any of them without your guys' express approval. The only times we have is if someone's doing a condemnation, we have taxes left on a parcel or something like that, barns and something like that. But other than that, we do not waive any conflicts.
No, but we need to, going forward, given, you know, what they want to do with their community and they, Taft is their advisor. And I see real conflicts coming up with the county on what we're doing with our zoning and our redevelopment plans.
Absolutely, we can switch and make a pivot at this point.
No, definite pivot.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Second, the last item, I apologize, is for the upcoming 911 center. S and P, we have engaged with S and P for a confidential ratings call. That would be a cost of $15,000. The contract has not been sent to us, but we would like to get it approved sooner than later so we can begin those processes. So I'd have that approved today by you, subject to legal review and Board of Commissioners sign off.
So move.
Second, and this funding would come from the 911?
The PSAP, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The last item is invoices for Taft law for $34,902 for declaratory judgment and EEOC matters.
So move.
And that is all I have.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Director of Administration.
Thank you. Commissioners, I just have a few things for you this morning, excuse me, this afternoon. First off, I'm presenting for your review approval and the signature of Commissioner Altman, the extension contractual services agreement for the 4H extension. This is a contract that is entered into annually and is in their extension budget. So it's not something that is directly coming out of the Commissioner budget or the, may ultimately come out of the county general fund, but it goes to the extension first, so it's a contract for that.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The second item I have, I'm presenting for your information of view, consideration of the potential decision. It's been issue raised by risk management regarding DOT physical examinations. Our health department or wellness center had previously performed those, but they are not going to perform them moving forward, as I understand it. So there are some questions risk management had with respect to whether Hamilton County employees that require commercial driver's licenses as a condition of employment, whether the board wishes for this benefit to continue. And if so, would the board be in support of using med work, occupational health, and safety in risk management, submitting the related invoices for payment to the same fund historically used? Additionally, for Hamilton County employees that have a commercial driver's license but do not require it as a condition of employment with Hamilton County, does the board wish for the benefit to continue? If so, would the board also be in support of using med work, occupational, and having safety and risk management submit the related invoices for payment to the same fund historically used? And the third question for consideration is for non-Hamilton County employees that are clinically eligible and require this service, does the board wish for this benefit to continue? And if so, the same question, would they support using work med, occupational health, and safety risk management in submitting the related invoices payment?
Okay, I think we need some clarification here.
Sure. There's three different categories.
Okay, let's deal with it, we got, we got.
So as of April 2024, the health clinics reported they're no longer going to be able to offer those DOT physicals.
And let me stop you there. If this becomes too big of a deal, I think we can mandate them to do it anyway.
So the, I spoke to Hillary Herndon. The alternative, if it's in the same building, would be for them to report to work med, occupational health, so they would walk in the same facility. Instead of going left, they go straight. The difference here is, is I've historically never had to deal with invoices. The, this service, which is technically a benefit even from our DOT drivers because that's required of them to maintain their own license as a condition of employment. It's best practice that an employer cover it, but it's technically not required. So if we wanted to continue offering this all the same, we could utilize work med. Instead of that being billed with our monthly service fees that we currently pay the clinic, those invoices would instead come to me directly. And so the question is about one, wanting this benefit to continue, and there's really three groups. The first of which is our DOT drivers that need it as a condition of employment to maintain their license. The second is for those employees that don't require a CDL as a condition of employment, but they carry it and have historically been using our clinic for, to maintain those license. And the third.
Oh, let's back up and do the second.
Yes, ma'am.
So what advantage is it for the county to participate in their process of CDL? Do they drive on occasion with push and snow? I mean, what is the relationship with the county?
So this is, this is just, it's a benefit. I guess the advantage would be when the county, in the past, when we've struggled to get DOT drivers, they have reached out to employees to see if there may be interest amongst those employees. I think one of the things, it just, we've really encouraged our employees to utilize that clinic. And many of them have gone away from their own primary care physicians and different things where they historically would get these taken care of. And those employees that have been doing this for several years are now going to have to find some alternative options. When River View does have an option, it's just if you want this to continue.
Okay, highway, have you used none? Anyone else like that, that's not a contractor for snow or any other use?
Trying to think of other departments, I'm assuming you're talking about people in other departments, not ours.
Correct, yeah, that would be the second group. The first group is our DOT drivers.
Yeah, I think it's been rare that we used any other CDL drivers from other departments because we tend to hire our own seasonal CDL drivers.
How many of them are in that category, Steve?
Do that and ask them.
So that, that information, they're not in our drug testing pool. And then the third group is kind of a little different, but the dependents or those that may, a spouse or someone that may.
Well, that one's, that one's obvious to me. It's the in-between employees that if there's a benefit to the county.
So last year was a good example, I don't think the need from a snow perspective that we had to, we did have one individual employed by the sheriff's office that was technically in our drug testing pool and was willing to assist the highway department should it become necessary.
Okay. Well, let's take them separately. I think our employees that we require to have a CDL, I do not mind underwriting that cost. So I'd move to allow that to happen. All in favor?
Aye.
As to the second group of employees, I guess if they signed off that they would be willing to help in an emergency and would follow on-call procedures, there might be benefit.
If they're willing to go into a pool of people that would be accessible?
Yeah, if we got to that point, there's a driver qualification process that we would need to go through, but that option would. The biggest thing is every, this is either every two years or every year that these physicals happen.
So would Christine's motion or proposed motion be beneficial or not?
I'm not sure the response, but it would, I mean, it's definitely an option if that's what's approved.
Or we could do half of the cost.
What do you think, Brad?
Well, we at one time asked other departments for people willing to volunteer and help with the CDLs. And quite frankly, I didn't know that we used anybody. We might have used somebody for a few hours, but a lot of times they're busy, they don't want to help, and you want them to help. It's the whole thing that we used to run into trying to use somebody from a quarry or some, you know, that type of thing. So, I mean, it could be beneficial if in a extreme emergency. You could call on them people, but I don't see it happening very often. Be very infrequent, I think, that we would need to use them. Unless we get into a problem attracting seasonal drivers that we normally do. Right now, we've got a pool of about 10, so we're in pretty good shape going into this one.
Do you have a recommendation, Stephen?
So my initial plan today was to come strictly, my concern with assisting with the DOT compliance was our DOT drivers. And the questions expanded only after a conversation with the auditor's office where they confirmed that the funding source would remain the same. So where this historically has been paid from is where I'm told the best option to submit these invoices to, so the.
And that is?
It was 1401 or 1402.
Well, we don't talk in numbers. Do you have any idea?
I can't.
Was it from county general?
It was wherever we are currently paying the clinic out of, so.
That liability trust or insurance?
It would be a.
The insurance trust?
It'd be the health trust or anything.
Or health trust, I mean.
Yeah. Well, let's, why don't you ponder that a bit? I don't think we need to decide today on the other two classes, so.
You guys meet next week too, right?
Those two classes.
Are you on a timing limit or some C?
Right, right, right.
So for me, my, what I kind of needed a decision on was our employees that have.
Yeah, we already said that's okay.
So for now, the answer is we'll pay for them, you'll consider in the future whether you would also pick.
Well, let's bring it up first meeting in January. And you think about it in between and think about the pros and cons of any type of pool agreement because we're not going to be doing drug tests and we don't want to put them on official on-call. So I'm not sure whether there is utility to doing that.
And so is they do.
Thank you.
Then the last thing I have, that's not on my agenda, but given to me by Diana a short time ago.
It's a stack of papers to sign, you must take them away.
From the president only?
Unfortunately, no, these require the signature of all, well, all three, there's a spot for all three commissioners. They are largely, they're previously approved contracts. Most of them, I believe, are, if not all, are the NFP contracts. There is a request by Dan, Diana, who deals with these invoices each month that you authorize her to pay two of them in a one lump sum payment. And that is, first off, healthier Hamilton County, their total award is $2,450. She would request that you authorize that to be paid in one sum rather than divided by 12, as most of these NFP grants are. Second one is for Teeter Organic Farms, which is $15,499 for a vehicle that they were already attempting to purchase in the last 30 days. I don't know if they succeeded in that or not, but they were trying to get it to 2024.
Well, do we have an appropriation for these?
This is in 24, correct?
These are the 2024, for the 2024 contracts.
So did they fund our contracts or not?
Well, so these are all part of 3001. They fund, they approved these, yes. They cut out a substantial chunk out of the budget overall out of our 3001, but it was not a notation that these were what they were not funding.
Well, how do we know what they're not funding?
That's a great question, isn't it? What, Mike, what's that old saying, any, yes, what contract would that funding?
Chris, on those, you have a list that they approved those, what you're saying.
And so they specifically funded these contracts?
Yeah, they went through and discussed each one, I believe.
Well, I'd just note for the record that our request for professional service funding was cut by council for, I don't know why. Other than they want us to come ask, which didn't go well. Okay. Second.
And both for those two to be paid in a one lump sum.
Discussion.
Resolve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think Steve Wood was supposed to.
Oh, yes, sorry. I have one additional matter that.
No.
Deals with a generator that Mr. Wood has been dealing with.
Did you break a generator again?
No. If you remember correctly, this winter when Janus went down and busing stopped, they were looking for a generator, they had around, something 300,000 they were looking at price. 911, working with that department, they were getting ready to change out generator. So I took the contractor over, we looked at their generator needs and what needs to be done over there to do that, just put that price together. 911 has informed me that as long as the commissioners were good, that we could donate that to Janus and that they could pay for the hookups, they will follow our guidelines that we give them. I just need to take, get in contact with them and get this through the board if we so see the donation.
Is that for the transportation primarily?
That's mainly for the transportation and operations as opposed to.
Okay.
They'll run everything out there.
Is there a motion on the donation of the generator?
So move.
Second discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for handling it.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, these aren't mine. Is it last page or what?
Third.
Page three and almost all of them.
Next time, can we have them marked?
All right, totally, Christine.
Okay, thank you.
Put a silver in my door.
All righty, so we've gone through most everything.
Sure.
Yes, next.
Got one item for you today, a medical contract for jail medical services. In the spring, we reached out to our current vendor and asked them for a budget number. They came back to us after that budget number was approved by the county council and had raised the cost by about half a million dollars. So we informed them we were going to go out and get some other quotes. We did that, we got five additional quotes. In that process, Advanced Correctional Health notified us that they were going to be canceling the contract and they were going to be done at the end of December. 3Cs or Comprehensive Correctional Health is going to be able to take over that service on January 1st. They're going to hire back all the employees that are currently in our jail, which we're very happy with, including our mental health services and whatnot, provide some additional services that we have been requesting and need. And it looks like it's going to work out very well, so requesting approval from that. Connor and my attorney have reviewed that contract as well.
Sheriff, explain to me again, they hadn't quoted on that before?
They had, they provided us a quote.
And then you got it to the council.
And then when we sat.
And then they backed down on the quote.
Correct, yeah. So they had given a time limit of, I believe it was 30 days to sign a contract with that quote. This is how we've done it every other year. Essentially, that process takes longer than 30 days to submit, go through the county council budget process. So after we went through that to sit down with them, they had raised the price. There were some communication issues between Advanced Correctional Health. There were some communication issues between Advanced Correctional Health's corporate staff and our sales rep. She was apparently giving, given this number long before, but didn't tell us. She's since been terminated from the company, but that doesn't really help us in the situation we're in. We sat down and met with the president of the company, and she said they were losing money on the contract and they weren't willing to budge on the price, so that's why we went out and got additional quotes.
Okay, and with respect to contract review, we have run into a liability issue with service providers in the medical realm.
Yes.
And was that contract specifically reviewed to avoid the problems that we had the last time?
Yes, and the liability protection is more than ACH. They also have double protection because their company has protection and each individual, well, their medical staff, but also each doctor has this umbrella coverage as well. So their coverage is better than our...
Is better than the prior...
There's quite a few layers of connection under this contract.
And our prior contract didn't have any restrictions with respect to staffing or upon that termination?
Say that one more time.
Okay, several times we're dealing with professionals, and the legislature made some changes this year, but non-compete clauses can come back and surprise the new contracting entity?
Yeah.
And I don't know whether our prior agreement had any non-competition and non-solicitation of employees.
It did not. This is also very common in this industry. They've taken, this particular company has taken over for several other of ACH's contracts, and this has been done in that case as well. So this will be their 47th contract, I believe, and I think 10 of those are taking over for ACH in the exact same fashion.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were sensitive to that, so we not getting an injunction?
There is nothing, no, the previous contract had no language prohibiting anything like that of that nature, so we're good with it.
Good enough. Is there, after the examination, is there a motion to...
I have motion to approve.
Second, any other discussion or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, that was your item?
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Auditor.
We always knew you had a good thing.
Always, always. That was for the sheriff. The first thing I have is a liability trust claim for $600 for my COI for your approval.
I'm sorry.
Liability trust, $600 for my COI.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have some release of capital asset forms for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
These are your favorite. Sorry.
She's not really sorry.
I know.
Next, I have acceptance of letters and credits and bonds for drainage for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And next, I have the treasurer's monthly report for November for your approval.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have vendor claims for your approval.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have health trust monthly expenditure report for your approval.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I then have liability trust monthly expenditure report for your approval.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I have payroll claims for your approval.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. And I believe that concludes our meeting session in the, in this room, we will reconvene...
We've got these two decisions.
Wave them, wave them, I didn't know you were so fast. Here you go.
We reviewed the bids from earlier in today's meeting, and for the bids for small structure 23023, East 196th Street over Unknown Street, the apparent low bidder turned out to be the low bidder, we recommend award to Hoosier Pride Excavating Inc. in the amount of $420,382.98, 420382.98.
Your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations to Jim.
The next, we recommend, after reviewing the bids for the resurface contract, that that be awarded to DC Construction Services, Inc. They were the apparent low bidder and the eventual low bidder, in the amount of $1,385,531.49, 1385531.49. Would recommend board accept.
Move.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, thanks for coming back. Geez.
I got a lot done.
Apparently so, working on other stuff, huh?
You can thank me later.
Good.
There will be, way later.
Well, we handled things in your absence, and you came back just in time for us to retire to 1A. Good job. One thing on our table items is the Pelosi settlement agreement, I believe, has been taken care of, and I think we can take that off.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All righty, well, thank you all for coming. You're more than welcome to join us for some scintillating conversation in Conference Room 1A at 3:00, which it is.